Welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Monday, August 25th, 2025. We will first go into our executive session, which point we will come out no sooner than 6:00 PM tonight, so Mark.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions and non-union personnel and/or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and the Chair has determined that open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position. B, pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 30, A21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, previous interim acting town administrator. C, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law, our federal grant and aid requirements, the open meeting law, Mass General Laws, Chapter 30, A22FG, to review, approve, and/or discuss the possible release of executive session meeting minutes dated August 4th, 2025. And D, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the Port Restaurant versus Town of Harwich matters, as the Chair has declared that an open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town. Second.
Okay, it's been two seconds.
I'm good to give it away.
Okay. All right, let's take a vote. Pete?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I. We will be back no sooner than 6:00 PM. Called an open, had an open session, and we went into executive session. I had nothing to report. Out of the executive session, other than since the executive session was originally assembled, the port has elected to take its option for a final appeal on penalties relating to a previous penalty, so we're back in court. With that, I hope you could join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, staff comments, law announcements.
If no one will, oh, sorry, I'll go after you. Thank you. Of course, I am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please take your time.
Four score. Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. I just wanted to give you the, can you believe it, we're going into September, so fast. Some of the programs for the community center will be, we are doing a muggable moments, which at the community center, we witnessed so many kind gestures and people doing wonderful things, that we have put together some small token of our appreciation of all the good that people do, and we'll just randomly be giving them out throughout the month. So just to say thank you to the public for all they do, whether it's a staff or, it doesn't matter who it is, so you'll see muggable moments happening. I hope each and every one of you gets one, because you're all doing wonderful things. On Thursday, September 4th, we are back with our free pasta dinners. That is from 5:30 to 7:00, and we are happy to report that we have a new function of the pasta dinner. We have been able to secure some gift cards that we'll be raffling off for people who, not raffling, there's no raffle involved, we'll be just picking a number. I'm afraid of her. We will be just picking a number and giving them out to people who may need some little extra help at this time, as kids go back to school and things. So that is the pasta dinner, all are welcome. We have a series happening, Matters of the Heart, that's another free event. It happens on Wednesday, September 10th, 17th, 24th, and October 1st. This is about improving your heart, whatever that means to you, whether it's walking more or just being a better person, you can earn a muggable moment, but there's a lot that we are doing with Improving and Matters of the Heart. One of the big ones that we're cosponsoring with several different organizations, I'm sure you've heard of, is the Barks in the Park. That is on September 20th, at Brooks Park. It is with Harwich Health Department, the Harwich Animal Control Officer, the Harwich Chamber of Commerce, and the community center, and they have several different tables, there is free giveaways, a lot of fun events happening, again, another free event. We will be doing, we get this question.
What time is that?
Oh, I can't tell you, that's a secret. I'm sorry. It's from 10:00 to 4:00.
10:00 to 4:00, thank you.
We get asked a lot about getting training for CPR, people are always looking for that, so we will be doing a class on Thursday, September 25th, at 2:30. The cost is $20, that does not go to us, that does go for your card that you get for the certification, but you do need to sign up for that, because they can only take so many. Thursday, September 25th, at 2:30, and then back by popular demand, Slime, starting at 6:30 PM, another free event. So those are just some of them, I can keep you updated, but as always, please look for our newsletter and stop by the community center, we're happy to see you. Is that long enough?
Could you end with pasta dinner one more time?
I know where you're, thank you, and I hope to see you at the pasta dinner.
So to recap, you want us to get mugged and then slimed?
Yeah, and have some pasta.
That's what I thought. Further?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Well, first, I'm going to say to Pete's point, I think I see a T-shirt in the future for you. Pasta dinner. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll start by saying I take absolutely no pleasure in the following, and I also want to make sure that I don't get off point, so I prepared a statement for the record. I would like to share my thoughts on an interaction that occurred during the August 18th, 2025 Select Board Meeting. I was not present in real time, as I recused myself from that agenda item and left the room. I understand that it was not part, I understand that I was not part of the discussion or the deliberation, and what I'm about to say is not related to the agenda item, but rather the way business was conducted that evening. After watching the meeting the next morning and processing what had transpired, as well as fielding and having multiple phone calls, conversations with others who felt necessary to give me their opinions on the meeting, there's no question in my mind that I have a responsibility as one of your elected officials to make a statement here tonight. Sitting silent for me is not an option, and the public needs to know that at least one board member is not okay with how this board operated, and hopes that what occurred Monday night will not happen again. Perhaps some of my colleagues may share the same sentiment, and here is my issue. I want to express my deep disappointment regarding the treatment of a guest at the August 18th Select Board Meeting. The consistent commentary from a board member that was aimed and fired at the legal counsel of one of our local businesses throughout the agenda item was uncomfortable to watch, and entirely in my mind unacceptable, unnecessary, and below the standard of how this board should operate. I want to make it clear that I do not condone this disrespectful engagement tactic in any way or for any reason. We are at a critical time here in Harwich, we are actively seeking to hire several key positions urgently, for Harwich to move forward with strength and stability. I hope that any potential employment candidate who viewed that meeting will not conclude that this is how Harwich leadership conducts itself, or its business. We are making it harder on ourselves through certain actions to attract strong candidates to come to our amazing town. In recent meetings, this board has demonstrated a strong interest in improving culture and morale in Harwich. That change must start with this Select Board and all five of its members individually. Moving forward, we must lead by example, and in all future engagements, let us strive to do better and deliver a message with respect, decency, and kindness, ensuring our future endeavors reflect the values that we all cherish here in Harwich. Thank you.
Any further staff comments? Okay, move on to weekly briefing.
So a couple of updates, nothing major on the sewer project from one east and two west, so they're still working on old carriage estates. Work will be starting in Williamsburg very soon, so that is progressing, same with Standish Woods, still working on the Circle, Mary Willett, and soon they'll be over on Lydia Bangs Way and Jasper Moore. So I did do want to mention that last week, we had our first meeting in quite a while with the IMA Advisory Board in Chatham. One of the items on that agenda was the updated sewer regs that the water commissioners just recently approved last week, so we discussed that, those have been formally transmitted to them. We hope we get a quick turnaround, which will now make those updates official. We introduced the Phase 3A Great Sand Lakes Project to them as well, and we'll talk a little bit later in the agenda about a required letter from this board to the Chatham Select Board as part of the IMA to get approval for that, so that was, that was excellent. The Brooks Academy update, we received six responses to the RFP, so a very good response. The Designer Selection Committee and Megan Eldridge will start that review process, I believe it's tomorrow, but it's definitely this week as they work through that, so we're keeping that on track. So those are the main updates for now, and I have a number of ones under the Town Administrative Board, I'll cover them and get to that part of the agenda.
Any questions with Town Administrator?
Just had a quick question, Tony, there was an abbreviation, I didn't know what it was, DBE, do you know what that stands for? And I can-
Where did, where did you see it?
In the, in the, from the Robert Hour, it could be a subcontract, and I just didn't know, but I can talk to you tomorrow about it.
Okay, I ought to take a look if I can find it.
Some of the abbreviations they use.
We try to avoid them.
Yeah, but anyways, I'll talk to you tomorrow about it, just, just to learn about it. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, public comments. Wow, that's a first. Move on to the consent agenda then.
I'm sorry, Mr. How, did you, is this the public comment portion of the evening? Okay. I hope I'm doing this at the appropriate time, I'm, I'm not used to-
Public comment, so is the-
Okay.
Unless it's an agenda.
But I don't have any comments about this, I just got advice from the admin, from the town manager's office, that if I wanted to ask for something, I would do it during the public com, okay, thank you. My name is Lucy Steer, I own property at 59 Snowwind Road, and I'm simply asking for a meeting, and I don't know who it should be with, someone hopefully within town government, I want to talk specifically to somebody about traffic concerns on Snowwind Road and larger traffic concerns really between Bank and Neal, and that's, that's all I'm asking for. Do I give you a phone number or an email?
We can get your contact number, because that's the kind of discussion that probably would relate to public safety first, and then that would go through administration.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Don't leave without giving us contact information.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, who should I?
You can give it to me.
Okay, so sorry. You can tell I'm not used to doing this. Okay.
We'll, we'll put something together, don't worry about it.
I don't know if I should take it to the office or what I should do.
I can handle it.
Consent agenda then?
Sure. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Select Board Meeting Minutes from August 18th, 18th, 2025.
Does anyone second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, it's unanimous. Presentations. I'm going to couch this first, because I had an interesting talk with Michael late last week, and for those who haven't been following the seemingly never-ending arc on CWMP, which is the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan, we never presupposed we were going to pipe every house, and we also didn't presuppose that it was always going to be an engineering thing that was based on building stuff. So this, this is interesting, because it's also part of something else that's going on in discussions elsewhere in town government with Brewster, so this is a, a subject whose time is really, has come, so I'm glad that you're here, so maybe you can, you know, lay out for us exactly what's, what your thoughts are. If you and Tom, or you and whom else want to sit here and-
Thank you, may I start here, and then-
Sure.
Mark Nelson will give the presentation. Thanks, Select Board and interim Town Administrator. Michael Locke, Executive Director of the Harwich Conservation Trust, here with me tonight is Tom Evans, President of the Harwich Conservation Trust Board of Trustees, Chris Miller, Director of the Town of Brewster Natural Resources Department, and Mark Nelson, Principal and Hydrogeologist with Horsley-Witten Group, which is a consultant for the Town of Brewster. So Town of Brewster reached out to Harwich Conservation Trust to explore an innovative approach to reducing Brewster's required nitrogen load reduction within its portion of the Herring River watershed that is, as we know, shared by the Towns of Brewster, Harwich, and Dennis. It is hoped that this presentation continues to inspire creative thinking about ways for Harwich to address reducing its nitrogen load to coastal embayments, and therefore reduce the cost to taxpayers for wastewater treatment infrastructure. To give the presentation, we'll turn it over to Mark Nelson. Thanks.
Well, good evening, I'm Mark Nelson at the Horsley-Witten Group, and for a little bit of background, I've been working on the water resource issues in the Town of Brewster for, since 2011, and have developed their Integrated Water Resource Management Plan, which is looking at not just the wastewater issues, but drinking water, freshwater ponds, and things like that, and I have a brief presentation just to give you a sense of this, and how do we kick that into? Really what I want to do tonight is give you a sense of how Brewster's looking at the, the Herring River watershed, and the solutions that we've come up with to help restore the, the Herring River in as effective and as rapid a process as possible. So I'm going to go through kind of what Brewster needs to do for the Herring River, it's very different from what Harwich needs to do, just because of the land areas and the level of development, and kind of the overall plan that Brewster has developed and we've put together over the last six to eight months, including the purchase of fertilizer application restrictions on a bog complex near Sand Pond, the Thatcher's Bog Complex, and I'll go into a little more detail on that in a minute. But to give you a, the context here, this is the watersheds that Brewster has to manage under the new state regulations that require watershed permits for impacted coastal estuaries, and if you don't do that permit, everybody in that estuary has to put in an innovative treatment system on their septic system. So Brewster has worked for many years with Harwich on the Pleasant Bay watershed, that was the first watershed permit ever developed in Massachusetts, in context also with Chatham and with Orleans. So that permit is in place, it's being renewed over the next six months or so. Brewster also has a sliver of land in the Bass River and the Swan Pond River watersheds, and was able to get an exemption from any management, because the nitrogen load that Brewster provides is less than half a percent of the total load, and if you looked at those land areas, it's, yeah, I don't need to, you know, it's just a small sliver of the town with a lot of open space over there. So this is Brewster's part of the Herring River watershed, and what you see in yellow is developed land, what you see in green is protected open space, and there's some orange parcels here and there that is the build-out that could still occur overall. And that's important, because what Brewster has to manage is the impacts of development since 2004, based on the level of nitrogen loading that's coming from that. And the other factor that plays into this is the level of attenuation as water moves from one part of the watershed to the other. So a lot of the development in this watershed in Brewster is on the upgrading side of Sheep Pond and Long Pond, but that water flows from one pond to the next pond to the next pond, and there's a lot of nitrogen removal that takes place as that happens, it's called attenuation. And to give you a context, the build-out in the Sheep Pond watershed, way at the headwaters here, was 30 kilograms per year. After all the attenuation, the impact on the Herring River is .13 kilograms per year. So managing water quality issues in the developed parts of Brewster doesn't have a lot of benefit for the Herring River, because, because you get little nitrogen removal, but it can also take 30 to 50 years for that water to migrate all the way down to the river. So Brewster must manage the load from 2004 up to today, and then any future development considered build-out. And that's been reduced overall, because the land acquisition that's taken place since 2004, I apologize, that says 2024, but over that 20-year period has cut this back because of the town's purchase of different properties across this area. So what is the overall load that has to be managed in Brewster? The development that's taken place in the last 20 years is about 105 kilograms per year. Build-out could add 40, so the overall load coming into the Herring River that Brewster must manage is 145 kilograms. If none of that development was in place, the load per acre, the amount of nitrogen coming to the Herring River is below the threshold that was set for Brewster's parts, those watersheds in Brewster. And just for a little context, Harwich's requirements, there's more, more of the watershed is in Harwich, more of the developed areas are in Harwich. So Harwich has to manage 5,400 kilograms a year, plus additional build-out, and looking through the wastewater plan that's been developed for the town, the more recent version, if I'm reading it correctly, it suggests that the total load requirement that has to be removed is pretty close to 12,000 kilograms, so the 150 kilograms is like point, .12% or 1.2%, it's very small. So we've been looking at ways that we can, can manage this load and also have it take place in a way that's going to have a quicker help in improving the water quality in the Herring River. And the primary strategy came up in conversations with the Conservation Trust, looking at the Thatcher Bog Complex, which is near Sand Pond, and there's 20-plus acres of bog on that property, and if Brewster could remove the fertilizer applications from 16 of those acres, it creates 150 kilograms of nitrogen removal, which meets and somewhat exceeds the load reduction that has to take place for the Town of Brewster overall. And along with that, there are some other things that have already taken place since this, since the Mass Estuaries Project Report was put together, so there's been a fertilizer bylaw that was passed, there's been some alternative septic systems put in in places to help protect ponds, but that also helps the Herring River, and there's been changes in water use, when people have gone from a private well to public water supply, we get a better estimate of what they're actually using and what's going to their septic system. And overall, that's about 87 kilograms that's already been removed from Brewster's parts of the watershed. So this just gives you a sense of where these bogs are, the property that the Conservation Trust has bought, and there is a conservation restriction on those, that whole property, prohibiting future development, but that conservation restriction allows the Conservation Trust to continue to manage the bogs, and the discussions that have taken place in the deal that's being put together would be to purchase a deed restriction on that property, saying that the fertilizers will no longer be applied. And the goal here is to have that take place long-term, and to have a much quicker approach to improving water quality within the river. So purchasing that fertilizer restriction exceeds what Brewster needs to take place, but it also provides a nitrogen reduction that can be seen in the river within the next five to eight years, perhaps, because that bog complex is much closer to the actual saltwater in the, the Herring River system than all those areas that we were looking at earlier, upgrading in the Town of Brewster. It could take 30 to 50 years if, if something was managed further to the north. So it seemed to make sense for everybody, Brewster has no connection to the Herring River. We have the, the upgrading watershed areas, but the, the resource itself is entirely within Harwich. So the benefits overall, it's to prohibit future fertilizer applications, and there's about 200 pounds of fertilizer that have been assumed to be applied to those bogs, and Brewster is looking to purchase the rights to 150 kilograms. So Harwich can work with the Trust if there's a desire to look at the remaining nitrogen load on those bogs potentially. And the other part of this too, is there's a plan being developed to look at restoring those bogs into a, a healthy functioning wetland system, like the bogs near Hinckley's Pond and near the, the Tech School, and that also provides additional nitrogen removal, because the groundwater that's coming into a wetland is being attenuated like it's coming into a pond. If it's coming into a bog, it really doesn't get that level of attenuation. So there's other benefits from all these bog restoration projects that the Trust is doing, that is providing nitrogen credits for the Herring River watershed overall. And that's kind of the, the way it's going, the town is finalizing the agreement with the Harwich Conservation Trust, and looking to put an article on the fall town meeting warrant, to have the funding available to purchase that restriction, and then the town will apply for the watershed permit for its portion of the Herring River watershed, and be able to basically say, here's what we have to do, we've already done it, and we'll negotiate the permit with the state to get that put together. And it'll be much simpler than all the discussions the four towns have had with the Pleasant Bay watershed, to bring everybody together on the table and solve some of these problems. So it'll happen right away, it'll provide a nitrogen reduction that'll have a quicker benefit to the Herring River overall, and it, you know, provides the other nitrogen reduction potential from that property. It helps to fund the restoration that provides some of that other nitrogen removal. So that's kind of what I wanted to talk through, and happy to continue with questions or however you'd like to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Could you explain the figure of 241,000 paid? Who does it get paid to? Just explain that a little bit, wouldn't you mind?
Sure. The, the goal is to buy the rights to 16 acres of the bog that would no longer have fertilizer applied to them, and the language on that deed restriction is being drafted and will be worked through over the next few months. And the price was established based on a, a price that the state uses for funding the purchase of bogs, when they're being bought for conservation purposes or for restoration, and things like that. And they say it's $15,000 per acre of the actively managed bog, so that's the baseline we use to come up with that, that number.
So who does that, does that 241,000 get paid to the Conservation Trust?
That's correct.
On here?
Yeah, it goes to the Conservation Trust, because they own the rights to the bog fertilizers, and the Town of Brewster would be purchasing the rights to eliminate that fertilizer application.
So, okay, so it goes from Brewster to the Harwich Conservation Trust?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm, and thank you for being here, great, great presentation, and I'm pretty certain that Harwich Conservation Trust approves of this. Just making sure. You're sitting there with a big smile, Michael, I just want to make sure that this is a, like a hand in a glove here, and, and I'd like to hear from you if there's anything that you want to add to this, you know. Since it's, this is a little unique, in my, at least in my mind.
Yes, this, this, this is to be approved at the next Board Meeting of the Board of Trustees for Harwich Conservation Trust. I, I think to give greater context, in our work within Harwich, Harwich Conservation Trust seeks to continue to be a proactive partner with both land preservation in nitrogen-sensitive embayments such as Pleasant Bay or Herring River watershed. embayments such as Pleasant Bay or Herring River watershed or Sakwatautucket Harbor, for instance, with the partnership between the town and Harwich Conservation Trust and the Colebrook Eco Restoration Project, which is projected by the town's wastewater planning consultants to save Harwich several million dollars in reduced scope for wastewater treatment infrastructure within the Sakwatautucket Harbor watershed. I think it would be, it would be helpful for the town of Harwich to seek guidance from its wastewater planning consultants on how it might approach a reduction scenarios within the Herring River watershed, similar to how town of Brewster is planning its approach in this innovative way in collaboration with Harwich Conservation Trust. Perhaps there's a way for Harwich Conservation Trust and, and town of Harwich to partner in other areas where there have been town-owned bog properties. For instance, the town-owned bogs that are adjacent to West Reservoir. We know those were discontinued in terms of commercial production several years ago, but perhaps it's worth looking at, at those bogs within the Herring River watershed or others. We know that in addition to the Thatcher, the former Thatcher property, which Mr. Nelson referenced, that is now owned by Harwich Conservation Trust, roughly fifty acres on the Cape Cod Rail Trail, there's two other bogs in that area. One is north of Sand Pond, also owned by Harwich Conservation Trust. And the third is a town-owned land bank property that's north of and adjacent to Main Street, three seven nine Main Street. And right now, those three properties are part of a eco- restoration design study that's being completed by Interfluv under contract by Harwich Conservation Trust funded by a grant from the state's Division of Ecological Restoration. And we look forward to sharing the results of that preliminary eco- restoration design study with the town of Harwich to see if there's any interest in continuing that eco- restoration design process on its property in that three bog complex, namely three seven nine Main Street. So there are opportunities to explore, to collaborate on creatively addressing the nitrogen reduction load requirements within these impaired watersheds.
Always a pleasure. Thank you, Michael.
Don't go anywhere. During our conversation, I mentioned it to you, Dan Pelt here, who's our consultant, has actually been in contact with Brewster on other things too. So I, I see these all kind of tying in together ultimately. The third one that we didn't discuss was the Main Street Bog. I think it would behoove you to have at least an initial conversation with the Tech School Superintendent, because what they are actually planning on now, there's been some misunderstanding about it. They're looking at an environmental ecological think tank kind of, it's not going to be about agriculture and training people to be farmers. So off the top of my head, there's some upland there and there's some bogland there, and that's a discussion that might actually be worthwhile for both parties, given, given what their future plans are. But a lot of this stuff all ties in together, and it ties in without pipes. Yeah, well, you, you can't rush the science. We always presume that there would be a possibility that if we spend time, that science would catch up to us and we'd be able to do some of this remediation without having to do sewer piping. So this is terrific news, but I think the next step on our part, now that you brought this up, is to get Dan in here to see how this all ties together and what he would recommend, unless you disagree with that.
No, it's a great idea.
This is exciting, it really is. Do you have anything?
Well done.
Okay. Well, thank you, appreciate you guys coming in. Patrick?
Can I ask questions?
You could, but not from there.
Correct.
Patrick Otten, East Harwich. Fantastic, what a great solution. Don said, no piping. Thatcher Bog is fifty acres, but you're only purchasing fifteen? Is that correct? Sixteen?
You, you can have a seat there.
Why, why not fifty?
To clarify for, Mr. Otten, thanks for the question. So the overall property, the former Thatcher property is about fifty acres, of which approximately twenty acres are, are bog and the remaining thirty are surrounding uplands. And so town of Brewster is interested in, in purchasing the fertilizer reduction, restriction, elimination restriction on sixteen of the twenty acres.
Okay, good. And why not all twenty? I mean, it's...
Join me? Sure. Well, the, the whole twenty is a discussion item, and that's been talked about in Brewster, but the need is to hit that hundred and fifty kilogram number. You could buy the twenty and have a buffer on that. I think it's also important to realize that with that fifty acre purchase, if I'm right, Mark, like it's about nine homes that could have been built on that property. So the nitrogen load from build out from those homes has been taken off the table, and that's not something that Brewster is looking to take, you know, purchase a credit for. It's just the bog restoration. But if there's no more fertilizers being applied to that bog, then there's two hundred kilograms that have come off the table. Brewster needs a hundred and fifty of that. The other fifty, Brewster could take that as a buffer, or it could be something that, that Harwich takes credit for with this deal. And I just want to stress too, that the restoration process, we don't know exactly how much nitrogen credit comes from that, that restoration. We know there is a credit, and that's being studied in a number of places, so that's something that will come over time as well. In a typical pond, the water coming into it from that watershed, they remove about fifty percent of the nitrogen. A wetland like this is probably somewhat similar to that, because all the life in the wetland needs that fertilizer, needs that nutrient to, to grow and to thrive.
May, may I expand a little, Mark? So to, to just bring that into the context of the Colebrook Eco Restoration Project, recall that town meeting voters, at town meeting twenty seventeen voted to authorize two million dollars to, toward the eco- restoration project at the Colebrook Preserve, right, in the watershed to Sakwatautucket Harbor, with expectation based on a prior town meeting authorization that funded a nitrogen attenuation feasibility study for the Colebrook Eco Restoration Project that was completed by the School of Marine Sciences and Technology at UMass Dartmouth and CDM Smith. They concluded that with the town's investment in the eco- restoration project at the Robert F. Smith Colebrook Preserve within the Sakwatautucket Harbor watershed, that it could save up to six million dollars in reduced scope of sewer infrastructure within that watershed by naturally reducing the amount of nitrogen flowing through the ecologically restored wetlands in the four interconnected ponds through which Colebrook flows. And so the town has a, a contract with TMDL Solutions as part of a three-year nitrogen monitoring plan. It's in year one of data collection. And so expanding on what Mark just mentioned, the town is going to have some information soon, data, through its own contractor, TMDL Solutions, as to how much nitrogen is actually being removed through that Colebrook Eco Restoration Project. That information might be helpful in helping the town's wastewater planning consultants perhaps study ways that the town and Harwich Conservation Trust might collaborate on a similar eco- restoration project, perhaps on the former Thatcher property, because that is also a flow-through system, meaning there is water flowing through the wetlands, the bogs now, on its way to the Herring River. So there's certainly more to explore there.
One additional question. When you're talking about future developments, I know there's been a lot of talk from the town of Brewster about the ten eight, thirty acres on Long Pond, using ten of those acres for low-income housing. Is that factor been, factored into the estimate that you're giving for future development and nitrogen?
Yes. Yes, that, that potential housing community is factored into the build out. It's part of the hundred and forty-five kilograms, and it itself may have a solution that will reduce that nitrogen load, in part to protect Long Pond, because it's directly upgradient from that. But the purchase of the fertilizer restriction completely takes care of that from the Herring River perspective. And then there'll be some more as that moves forward for protecting Long Pond and removing additional nitrogen in that area.
Now, thank you very much. Good. Like to see more of this happen.
We're working on it. Trying to translate this into just something simple for the public to understand too, because we've had long conversations about this. I, I think it's kind of helpful while you guys are here to be able to point out that a lot of people view these ponds as discrete water bodies. We're inextricably tied, Brewster and us. The benefit to Harwich is an awful lot of the stuff, it's upgradient is north, it flows north to south. It becomes Harwich underground water after it passes the Brewster border. We, we necessarily need to work together, so, because this is all tied in. It's, it's not like this is our pond, that's your pond. And I think people need to understand that, that the only way to dourly approach this eco, with an ecological project is understanding who gets the benefit and where it's getting generated, but everybody has something, got some stake in this. I think that's fair to say.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, and this is, this was never contemplated to be in action, it's just previewing what's out there, and I'll see if I can get Dan in to have a big discussion, how, how this all ties together.
Great.
At least to us.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming.
Yes, thank you.
In keeping with the flow of keeping things by subject relatively similar, discussion and approval of the conservation administrative permit for ecological enhancement of the Fernandez Bog Entrance, town-owned land. The Harwich Garden Club has very graciously decided to get involved in this.
Yes, good evening. So I have a short presentation. I submitted everything electronically, so I don't know if they have slides or anything, or whether you folks have just received them.
I think we're going to find out together.
Okay. So again, I'm Susan Sager, I live on Long Pond Drive in Harwich, and I'm here on behalf of the Garden Club of Harwich. I'm here today to ask approval to use your land, basically, in simple terms. So we propose to plant two native gardens on the Fernandez Bog Beach Entrance, which is the entrance to Long Pond Beach on Long Pond Drive. Right now, that area is, in my mind, neglected, and as the Garden Club is working harder to do better in town with native plants, we thought this was a great area to plant. So the goals of the project would, of course, improve the beauty of the entranceway, but also to improve, you know, the habitat for wildlife there by providing plants that are good for both habitat and food, improving the health of the bees, the butterflies, all the other pollinators, as well as wildlife that live in, in our neighborhood. We do know that planting natives rather than exotic plants require less water, require less maintenance, improve the soil quality, and prevent erosion. So again, you know, high points for using natives in that area. We've worked both with the DPW and the Conservation Commission, who have approved the plans, and there is a permit submitted with the packet. All of the details of planting are there. I'm happy to go through all names of the plants, if that's helpful to you. But basically, we're asking, can we plant on your land? And the funding for the planting would be from the Garden Club of Harwich and several generous donors. So I'm happy to open for discussion or questions, if anyone has any.
Is the town administrator going to say it?
I can.
You could.
No, I think it's great. I, I actually sat in on a workshop that the conservation folks put on last week, talking about native plantings, and I learned a lot. I guess I was always doing everything wrong, so we'll try to do better. But no, I think it's great. I mean, I drive by there quite often and, you know, just making the entrance look nicer, and the Garden Club does a great job in maintaining those plantings that they put in around town, so Harwich is on our end.
More comments?
Pete? Well, my, my comment, and I don't want it to come off the wrong way, because I think it's an excellent idea, right? And, and I support it wholeheartedly. I, I just wonder if the area around these beautiful gardens you make is still going to look like, excuse my French, shit? Because what I'm, what I'm proposing is, can we ask the town administrator to work with DPW to not necessarily assist with the gardens, but a general cleanup in that area? Because I hate, again, see some beautiful gardens laid out and the rest of, everything around it looking not so nice.
Well, if you look at the drawing, they're small areas, and so if you know that entranceway, there are, you know, fishing derbies that happen there, there are trailers of boats coming in and out. So they're very small areas that within conservation restriction can be planted. So we're talking on the, I guess, west side, three bushes and a bunch of, you know, perennials that are just going to kind of weave into the natural blueberry, low bush, blueberry that's there. So there's not much the DPW needs to do on that side, except remove those ugly, I didn't say that, the wooden posts that have been there for decades and no one knows why. The other side is filled with poison ivy and a bunch of, you know, briars and nothing that's good. Behind the area of planting is a nice bayberry and sassafras, so that we would not touch, just the, the area in front of that. And then there's still probably at least seven or eight feet before you hit the tar, and so that's kind of the area that the town would normally clear. So, you know, as I met with Brian Alby, if I'm remembering his name correctly, he thought where we were proposing was all fine for him and would not be a problem. I think long term, we have experts in the Garden Club who are used to planting natives who are assisting with this project. It's not just me doing this, it's a group of people, and they're quite confident that over a two-year time period, the town will love those native gardens. You're not going to love them come spring, because there's not going to be a whole lot growing yet, but by the end of two years or so, it should look really quite good and should be self-sufficient there, is the goal. Other questions?
Nina?
No. Thank you, this is a nice idea.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things. Thank you so much for doing this. It's, it's nice to drive around Harwich and see the fingerprint of the Garden Club in all kinds of different places. And I would nominate Pete to take care of the poison ivy. If you need that done, I, I would...
That's actually one of the things I could take care of.
If you're not allergic, Pete, come on down, because I'm figuring out my bunny suit and how to get rid of it there.
I don't have anything more to say. I'd like to make a motion unless Mark has something he wanted to give.
No, I just, I love the Garden Club. I see them working at different places around town, all volunteers, so thank you so much for proposing this, being, taking the initiative. So I'm totally, thank you, that's all I can say.
And as you make the motion, I'd just like to point out that the conservation agent has opined on this, so the request is based on her approval also.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we approve a conservation administrative permit, which has already been cleared through conservation and approved, for ecological enhancement at the Fernandez Bog Entrance, town-owned land, from the Harwich Garden Club.
Second.
Any further comments? Moving seconded to approve the project, your permit. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. And thank you for being so gracious as to propose this.
Do you want to, do you have to vote on the thank you letter, or we're just going to...
No, we're just going to sign that. You have in your packet, based on, we were going to break into two parts, the discussion we were having, and this one has to do with a, a letter to the Montemoy Regional School District on the basis of capital projects at the beginning of their cycle, so that everybody's had a chance to look at it, if anybody proposing any changes or anything. Here's good. Does it look good to everyone?
I have no problem with it.
Okay. So we're here, motion to allow Mr. Chair to send that?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the correspondence to Montemoy Regional School District regarding the capital project submission timeline as presented in our packet.
Second.
Okay, so moving seconded to approve the letter to the Montemoy Regional School District about capital project submissions. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? It's unanimous. So Tony, you had an initial conversation relative to Great Sand Lakes?
Yes, so at the advisory meeting, in accordance with our IMA with the town of Chatham, the board needs to formally request the inclusion of the Great Sand Lakes sewer extension project into the IMA. In the beginning section of the IMA, and everybody agreed, this has always been anticipated as at Great Sands Lakes is actually mentioned in the IMA. So this will be the formal request to get the Chatham Select Board to formally approve and incorporate Great Sand Lakes into our sewer program as part of our 300,000 gallon per day capacity that we purchased some years ago.
And thank you for having that meeting because we always had presupposed that we were going to be doing, you know, this. And this is the last real big piece that we need to nail down, that that flow can go somewhere.
Yes. Yeah, they hadn't met in four years. I assume now that a lot of the, you know, searing work is going on, we'll probably meet more often. I anticipate, so.
Questions for the town minister?
If I can also mention, I think as part of that agreement, there is a clause in there about, I think it may be every five years, a chance to review. So at some point, if the board's inclined, you know, that's an option. I don't think we noted anything that's problematic, but that is built into the IMA to do a periodically open up the movement.
Any further questions? Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. And thank you, Tony, for doing this work. My only question is, it's probably a pretty elementary question, but as soon as we're ready to send flow from Great Sand Lakes, if this is accepted, we're able to then send flow. There's no other steps that need to happen prior to us sending the flow from Great Sand Lakes to Chatham.
You mean in terms of capacity? I mean, obviously, once we pipe into the system, yeah, and they approve it, then flow can go.
Then flow can go. That was my only question. Thank you.
That's why we're trying to keep track of everything. There's a lot of moving parts to get us to the conclusion here.
Yeah, I think the other thing, just for the board's, you know, situational awareness, if you will, you know, there's been discussions about the potential, and this is in the IMA also, about at some point maybe having to take effluent as part of this. Right now, there are, I'll say there are experts, you know, they're so far below that it's not likely to maybe even ever happen. But if it does, I did make sure that they knew that, you know, the permitting of that can take some time, so it's really about an early heads up if there's ever any indication that there's any need to send effluent back to Harwich for discharge.
Mr. Chair? Do you have a motion on this? Oh, sorry, Mark. Go ahead.
Okay, no, I'm well done. Do you want to move it or do you want me to move it?
Move it, sure.
Okay, I move that we approve the correspondence to the Chatham Select Board regarding the proposed extension of sewer service to the Great Sand Lakes area.
Second.
It's moving seconded to approve the letter to the Chatham Select Board. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay. I have to start this one off by thanking Natasha for not only finding out that this was something that we needed to do, but she largely drafted the proclamation, so really appreciated her efforts.
I'll make sure she knows.
Well, saying it here, I'm going to say it downstairs later tomorrow. So you have the proclamation in front of you. It's for National Suicide Awareness Month.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the proclamation recognizing September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the town of Harwich.
Second.
It's moving seconded to approve the proclamation to recognize September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month for Harwich. Any further discussion?
I'm not going to have Mark read the proclamation.
No.
No, no, no.
He can stay after to do that, after recess.
As a punishment.
True. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay. Pete has brought this up numerous times. I've noticed it too. The discussion on access to town council, I just want to make sure, in addition to there being an orderly process, it also has an impact on what we pay for the law firms. So we have to revisit this to make absolutely certain everybody knows, you know, what that is in terms of both our policy, and I know I had a long discussion with Amy Questle on Friday. One thing that, as a practical matter, that we're going to have moving forward is that any request from the town for legal counsel, so that we can absolutely know that we've got our arms around this, we'll go with the CC to the Select Board Chair and to the town administrators, so that we have some sort of contact point to understand just the length and breadth of the requests. With that, you got the access policy, it exists. Open the floor for discussion.
Happy to, if you want to.
Sure.
Recognize, sure. So as I said, I don't know, a week or two ago, I knew this policy existed and honestly, I don't really have an issue with the policy. Clearly, some language needs to be updated, but my bigger concern has to do with access. As it states, "When town funds are utilized to secure counsel, access to counsel by any board or employee under the jurisdiction of the board shall be approved in one of the following ways. Number one is by a vote of the board," meaning the Select Board. "Number two, with the authorization of the chair of the Select Board when an emergency circumstance exists, or three, through the town administrator." All those are fine. However, "In the event of approvals under two or three, any such approval shall be reported to the entire board as soon as practical." To the best of my knowledge, that does not occur. Access shall be limited, and this one I find to be extremely important, "Access shall be limited to the particular matter described in the request, whether that request shall be for a one-time opinion or ongoing legal advice. Once the immediate reason for the access no longer exists, the new request for access should be submitted to the board through those three ways." Additionally... I get you all on pause, don't I? We've got to skip a paragraph. "Whenever practical, all questions from any board or commission member shall be directed in writing or in person at a single meeting as approved by the board. Written questions shall be all-inclusive and shall be reviewed by the relevant board or commission in final draft prior to submission of counsel." The intent of this policy, I'm jumping back, is to coordinate the expenditure of town funds for legal representation. It also, it is also the intent of this policy to address all issues thoroughly and expeditiously so that all members of the affected board or commission, once access to counsel has been approved, have the necessary information to render the decision for which they are charged. My highlight there is that in the past year and a half, questions have gone to council, whether from this board or other boards, that I don't consider to be representative of all members. And so if we're going to reach out to council with a question or to seek advice or an opinion, then it should come to us to formulate all the questions so they're submitted together so that we don't receive an opinion from council and then have to go back to council with follow-up questions from other board members because the initial questions weren't covered thoroughly. So we can debate it all day long. My only point is, we have a current policy, we're not adhering to it, and I'm going to recommend that we adhere to this as a community until such time that it is, a change is recommended and implemented. So I'll get off my soapbox.
Well, you don't have to entirely get off your soapbox. I will take note that you and I helped write this thing. And you're right, it hasn't been followed in a number of years. So that was part of the conversation with Amy Questle, too, is to try to come up with some fail-safe system so that we knew for fact, not because somebody here divulged it or somebody on another board divulged it, but when KP Law receives it, that they will necessarily CC that request, you know, to the town administrator and to the Select Board Chair. And I told her, I presupposed that would go to all members of the Select Board after that because that's what the intent of this was always supposed to be. But more to the point, there's supposed to be a gate before the access. There's a process here. And it was designed around, perhaps the possibility exists that the outlier on a particular board, the one who's, the minority opinion, if you will, might actually be the correct opinion. So you have to have an all-inclusive request going to council or you're missing a different viewpoint. But we didn't want that to keep going on in perpetuity so that there'd be one request and then a counter request. And to Pete's point, it's more than a year or two. This has been a really long time. I haven't seen anybody do this in years.
Tony? If I may, Mr. Chair, you know, one of the options you may consider, and I've used this in the past, a lot of boards have very similar policies, there was a form, legal services request form. And council knew, right, that if they were going to be contacted, they knew that they needed to see the legal service request form signed or approved by one of the three ways that we just heard about. So that also helps to have an email, you know, all those legal service request forms get filed so we can keep track of who talked to who when and on what topic versus it being done via email or some other method that's a little bit harder to track. I think maintaining control of the legal service budget is a big deal in most towns because we know that it can be expensive and there needs to be some gatekeeping that goes on. So one of the things you may consider, well, you may look at future updates to the policy is having us actually include a legal service request form that any party that needs to access council would fill out. And the board can have access to those, so you can always go back and look and see who's accessed council and for what purposes. So just a thought.
Excellent. Does the board want to have administration take a run at what that language would look at and then bring that back?
I think that's a great idea. Yeah, that's just my opinion on it.
I'll bring, I'll put a draft on a future agenda.
Because the fundamental policy was right back then and nothing's changed to change why you would do it this way.
That was going to be my thought. Is there a form? Would there be, you know, set up a form?
Correct, yes.
Can you, okay, good. So you'll do the language for the form.
Mr. Chair, I could jump in before Richard.
I have one I can use as an example.
No, it's fine.
Sure, I don't need to finish.
No, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. To use your language, Mr. Chair, is there a gate before access for the members of this board? And what is the path for access for this board to use legal counsel? I'll add that as a past chair, there were many times I would call legal about an issue the board wanted me to check on and only to find out that two board members have already called and gotten information. So personally, I would never reach out to legal without going through the chair or requesting the chair reach out to legal, but I would like to understand how this board is supposed to access legal.
I personally, I'll mention this to one or two members, I personally feel like we're all elected and it would be, we'd be hard put to close off any Select Board member who had a problem gaining direct access to council. But I would advocate strenuously that the rest of the board just needs to know what's happened.
Or it's going to happen.
Or it's going to happen, one way or the other, but...
It's duplicative, I think, a lot of the times.
Yeah, but I don't see how you could make this apply to the board particularly because, again, everybody here is elected equally by the public. So without cutting off access entirely, the need for all of the members to know that that's going on or that's being requested is still out there. And I would advocate that everybody, as a bond of trust between us, we all need to be able to say, hey, I'm going to call legal counsel, or I did call legal counsel, so that we all know we've done that.
And I'd agree 100%. I don't think any of the elects up here should be shut out from contacting council, but a courtesy email to the rest of the board or to administration would, I think, suffice in my mind so that we're not duplicating, you know, the same question to council.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Perfect. Thank you.
No, the only, I would say it's more than a courtesy, it's a policy.
Yeah, it is.
You know, it says if we contact council, then we inform, you know, this board is informed if council is contacted.
They're making a promise to each other.
I agree all highly. If someone needs to reach out as a board member, they can.
Yeah.
But it then comes to this board to declare that council is contacted for X, Y, or Z.
But, and I don't agree, I don't disagree with that, Pete. I'm just saying that to save multiple phone calls, maybe it should be done prior to the phone call.
I agree.
But I don't see that language in here from a policy standpoint. I see it's retro or post-mortem, so to speak, but not pre-mortem, pre-phone call.
I'm with you.
Okay, great.
Still out there, Richard?
Sorry, Richard.
No worries. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Richard Waystack-Harwich. And I know this discussion is more Select Board, but there are some, obviously, departments that do utilize town council. From the Board of Assessors, the assessing director has to have access to legal counsel when it comes to an appellate tax board situation, where the town is being sued by a resident who's appealing an abatement, declination by the board. And that, again, the process that the assessing director will utilize is going to the town administrator, saying, we need to reach out to town council because we have a case that the assessing director has been called from the appellate tax board. But there'll be times that that conversation will go back and forth a number of times. And I just want to make sure that the policy is clear, that once the assessing director has approval on a specific case, that she does not have to go back to the town administrator each time she's making contact with town council. And if there's going to be a form, it's great, she knows what her responsibility is, or the assessing director knows the responsibility, but it is more frequent than not that we do have access to town council because of the regulatory requirements.
And my answer to that would be that Amy Questle, I should probably make sure that the public understands she's lead counsel for KP Law now that John Giorgio has stepped aside, so, had made the comment on Friday. I get requests from many different directions and that was concerning because I don't know that we ever had a clear picture of that going on. This is just so that it's not to restrict legal services when they're needed because obviously there are regulatory boards, too, that have the need for that. But unfettered access without any idea, because we put out the contract or we provide the legal services and we pay for it, it would be really nice if there was some orderly process where we are fully aware of what's going on. And I don't know that anybody sitting here, including the town administrator, has a full idea of everyone over the last year who's made a request.
No, I just want direction to the staff and to the department heads who are utilizing it. However, it's reported back to the board is fine through the town administrator. And I think a legal request form is great. And then you've got a record of everything that's happening with it, so when someone says, hey, how many times have we requested, it's a great opportunity. I just want to make sure that that access is still available as necessary.
But there's a difference between something that's an ongoing litigation issue and a one-off question. So I mean, I think this presupposes if it's a one-off that you got to come back again, even if it's generically the same subject matter. But something that's a process thing, that's legal, whatever, then you would be able to get the approval upfront until it was adjudicated. So Pete?
Just to Richard's point, so it does say, once the immediate reason for access no longer exists, then a new request would be submitted. So to your overall point, if it's the same legal battle going on or discussion going, taking place, then additional approval is not needed. Two other quick points, if I could. Again, one of the driving forces for me to bring this forward is that both FY '24 and '25, we exceeded our budgeted legal line item. And again, the real reason I bring it forward is, there's an existing policy that's just not being adhered to. So I'm fine if somebody wants to bring a recommendation to update the policy, but until such time, then I just want us to adhere to what we have written and in place. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I would just add, if I may, Mr. Chair, the, there are some unique arrangements and I know the board is continuing to parse through the RFP for legal services for the town, so we've worked in some language to that, that you'll see that, you know, looks for some of those unique things that some firms are doing now because they recognize the strain that the legal service budget has in most towns. And so there are some ways to help cost control that. I've done that in two communities pretty successfully, so we'll see if that garners any, you know, anything once the board is ready to send that on the street. So we've incorporated that language in there, looking for those type of ideas.
Excellent. And if this were to go into our policy virtual file folder, I think that would be terrific because as Pete pointed out, it's always been the policy and it continues to be the policy. The only thing that we're talking about is trying to create a form in furtherance of the policy. We're not going to change the policy.
Agreed. Okay.
Okay. Discussion regarding the finance director search process. I'm not sure that anybody has a real good answer, but...
So what I would offer, so we did get word back, so Mr. White is not able to do that recruitment, just doesn't have the, I'll say bandwidth, I guess, at this point for that. that. So it leaves two possibilities that I see. One is to go back out on the street to see if there's a firm out there that would do the search for the board and for the town. That does take some time. I think Mr. Fikarski adequately summed it up. It's something we need to work on, you know, sooner rather than later. So talking with Megan and some other folks, it's within our capability to do it in-house, to do the search. I mean, we have pretty much all similar types of, you know, tools in our toolkit to work a recruitment like that and we could do it sooner and hopefully, you know, get some candidates for the board to interview versus going through the RFP process, again, which takes 30 days and then you go out. So I mean, it could be months, not, you know, a shorter period of time. So I think there were still some open items though, from what I heard, because much of this was happening before I started. But to finalize the job description and I think also for the board to perhaps pick the salary range that they wanted to, or that you wanted to use so that we have all the parts and pieces if the board is inclined to have us do the recruitment internally for the position and see if it can be handled, you know, that way this time around. So I offer that as a second option for consideration.
So I'll bring this back, but everybody needs to be prepared to have some sort of idea of what the salary structure that we're trying to recruit from looks like.
Okay. So you want us to put together some, either comps or some suggestions or how do you want to...
Unless someone's got an alternative here, I know that Megan was a fan of the Collins Center, I'm not sure I am, but handling it in-house sounds like a good idea, but you need to know what you're offering as a range.
And I'm not speaking of Tony, but I think he was referring to a range of the salaries that we would consider for that position. But with that said, and obviously we need to bring it back because we need to make some final decisions. However, I'm more than comfortable moving forward with the town taking the lead on this right now. Let's try to get this thing moving. Let's get some traction. Let's see if we can get some candidates. With all due respect to all the other parties involved in the prior search, I'm not sure that we're going to see less applicants if we take this in-house. If anything, we might even get more applicants, so...
Make a motion?
To...
To empower the town administrator to pursue that and delegate it to whomever in furtherance of the recruitment?
Well, we can make that motion, but we do have to have the final discussion on salary range and if there's any, if anybody wants any modifications to the existing job description. I would also ask administration to review that and come back with any suggestions or edits as well.
That's why I wanted to designate them, because once they're designated, then come back with whatever they need to actually do it.
So what did you want that motion to be?
To empower the town administrator to pursue the recruitment process and come back to us with recommendations relative to the salary range and any other considerations that he thinks that are pertinent to that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? We're going to take it in-house then. Yes, Mark?
In terms of discussion, it sounds like we're going to need another meeting to give the town administrator guidance. We're not going to have a meeting next week. So we're looking at two weeks from today to give him final guidance. We know from our last search what we offered and what we ended up in a high range. I would suggest, because this is such an important thing, that we don't wait the two weeks. We figure out a way to give the town administrator the guidance that he needs to put this right out on the street now.
Problem is, I don't know, it's just salary that he wants to discuss. I mean, where it is he's recruiting.
Well, I was told that the job description wasn't finalized, so I'd, again, this was, happened before I started, so I'm not sure if there's still questions on the final job because that needs to go out with it so that...
That's kind of what I'm saying, is I need a recommendation for what the final process and the final product looks like. I mean, and only he can do that.
Okay. Could we empower you as the chair to have the town administrator or even contact us by phone so at least we know, so he could finalize this and get it out? I don't mind not having a meeting, you could give a phone call and empower you to give the TA the power to move ahead.
Totally up to you guys because I'm not going to presuppose, I don't have that authority on my own, so...
Mr. Chair, may I? I'm sorry, I don't want to jump.
No, no, I was just pointing that you...
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We did a search for finance director, yet in the packet, we've got job title, Department Finance, Town Accountant dated November 16, 2015. Why wouldn't, I mean, this board created a job description for the last RFP, for the last search firm. I would think that should be in here and we could work off of that.
Kind of. The problem is that the two candidates that we went through who didn't wind up taking the job had both made a comment relative to how the accounting part of that job is daunting because there's a management and there's a projection part of the job that's more important and that the day-to-day activities of the accountant should be like a deputy finance director doing that as the accountant, not the primary position. They both made that comment, that you're asking for way too much out of one person.
Okay, and I didn't hear those comments come from the applicants. I, as I read through this, it's outdated in my opinion. I think there's a, so maybe even a blend of the two. Something a little more current than this, and I think we were really close with the other one.
Yeah.
The two points that were contested, if I'm not mistaken, was salary range and...
Off-site.
Off-site work, remote work. So out through you, I would ask administration to find that last RFP that we put out with the job description, send it to the board. And again, this is a request, not a demand. Send it to the board if the chair is so inclined to have it happen this way. Then we can all look at something that's current and maybe work off of that using some of this language so that we can be at least prepared for our next meeting, if it's in two weeks, to come with a final product so we can move.
And that's the difference between the two positions you have. Mark doesn't want to wait two weeks and you're talking about waiting two weeks. I just will say to you upfront that there is absolutely no way to do this where you...
Remotely.
Where I have to call each person because that's a serial deliberation and that's not legal under the open meeting law. So we're not doing that.
So if I can just ask a question, I just want to make sure, because again, this was pretty me, but was there, in the RFP that went out during the last recruitment, was there a job description that's different than this?
I don't think it was a job description.
There was none.
It was an offer. It was more of an offer in the scope of responsibility, if I remember right. Again, it was a long time ago, I'd have to see it again, but I think it's closer to what we're looking for as final product than this one.
Okay.
Is my only point.
Yeah, typically the recruitment firm will put together a recruitment brochure that just sort of highlights.
Right.
So the question would be whether that information came from this job description or it came from somewhere else. I'm not sure. I will pull it out and look.
And I'm not sure either. That's why I'm asking to get it sent to us again. We can look at it.
Yeah, because at the end of the day, this is what controls, you know, the higher employee, their job description versus what's in the recruitment brochure.
Well, actually, can I interrupt? Sorry, Tony.
Sure.
So in your packet, page, for those of you at home, 65 and 66, that's actually one went out.
It's correct.
If you look at page 66 specifically under the selection process, under recruitment posting, like with the nice cranberry bog? Yeah. So if you go to page 66...
See, I thought, I see Karen Shanley down at the bottom. I thought there was another, a couple pages, I thought.
Not that I recall, but you could be right.
Well, 50/50.
Right.
But the point is, we, a couple things, Mark. If we were to pursue anything with Gru and White, we wouldn't be talking about them actually moving on something for another couple of weeks anyway. So if we're going to be doing this, I think we have the opportunity to sit down and brainstorm about what the description looks like. And it could be something that we actually have in the packet that shows what language we're going to use and what salary range we're going to use. And then we're on our own doing it.
And if I can ask, Mr. Chair, if I remember right, a little while ago, we did get a little closer to nailing down a remote work concept.
Got that right here, that we need to put that on the agenda too, to have a discussion about what remote work looks like. Because that's the linchpin.
Which would be part of this.
That's, it's actually part of a lot of other things. It's a linchpin to a lot of things.
Sure, sure.
So that's what I promised to do. Bring back a potential remote work policy and also propose, look at what the job duties are and what the salary range is that we're going to actually ask administration to pursue.
We're not leaving that meeting until we have decided.
Okay, you can stay here until then, but I'm pretty sure you want to go to the Labor Day weekend first. All right, so if there's a consensus, that's how we'll do it, then we don't have to worry about serial voting or getting in contact with anybody because that, again, that's a bad path to go down. Okay.
The tuition tonight, we decide.
Well, we've been dancing around that comment. I just want to make sure, I'll say it now so that people don't tune off their TVs and say, where are these guys next week? I have been beating you guys up all summer long. We didn't take the odd-even approach in the summer. We're where we should be in terms of milestones that we need to accomplish to be able to get into the town meeting warrant. We've already talked to FinCom and the Capital Outlay. We're taking next week off so that everybody can regenerate and then we'll come back the week after that. And it'll also give the town administrator time to go over in a really deep fashion what our finances look like and see what is possible in the union negotiations in a serious way that actually is supported by numbers. And that's not something he could, even with staff, is going to accomplish in a few days. So it'll also give them the bandwidth to be able to pull that off. So then we'll go on to the contracts.
So for you, under contracts, it's time to redo our ambulance billing company. We got one response from Comstar LLC. They are doing our ambulance billing now. The terms of the contract in terms of price haven't changed, so it's two and a half percent fee generated revenue each contract year. So we're just going to continue to business with them and I think they've, talking to the chief today, in terms of their collection rates are extremely good. They're in the 90s, which is an area we always want to take a look at to make sure we don't have a backlog of, you know, bills that haven't been collected yet. So they do a good job. So the chief's happy with them and my recommendation is the board authorize me to sign the contract with Comstar for ambulance billing.
So moved.
Second.
Having a second motion, this, I always conflicted over things like this, so I'm just going to lay out the question here. Does anybody have an idea? Because when you start talking about something where you're paying somebody off of somebody else's number and they get a percentage of it, anybody have a clue as to what range we're talking about, the actual payment to the contractor?
You mean in terms of how much do we collect annually and...
Not what we collect, what we give to them for that service. I know it in terms of a percentage, but does anybody know if it's breaking under a breadbox? What's the magnitude of it?
We do, but I don't have that. I'm sure we do.
Okay.
At this point, we just had a brief discussion about it today, but I can get that number and I can get that to the board in terms of what we're paying, you know, on an annual basis.
I'm not asking anybody to hold this up, so if nobody else is troubled, I can get that answer to me later.
Yep.
All right, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Town administrator's report.
Okay, I got a few items. In the area of appointments, we're going to appoint Stephen Gingus to the position of per diem van driver for the council on aging. So that'll fill a vacancy there. One of the things I wanted to propose, and I've used this in the past for certain positions, we have a 14-day, you know, waiting period where the board can vote to overturn an appointment, if you will, have to take an affirmative action. I think in many cases, and maybe it's even never happened, but we do a great job in, you know, advertising, interviewing and onboarding our folks. And in today's environment, most of your candidates are probably applying for more than one job because they need one and not sure where they'll get hired. So I would request that on occasion, the board may perhaps entertain my request for a waiver of the 14-day waiting period so we can onboard an individual before perhaps they end up somewhere else. So in the case of, if the board can have a discussion before I make the motion and see what the thoughts are about that potential possibility, I'm not sure it's been used here before, but...
It's in the charter, and we're not going to change the charter tonight, but I think that it's something that we have within our grasp to be able to waive on a case-by-case basis to allow you to do that. So it's up to the board. You have that request for this?
For this appointment, to start with this one, if there was anybody on the board that would make that motion to waive the 14-day waiting period for Mr. Gingus?
I'll make the motion to waive the 14-day waiting period for the applicant as you mentioned his name.
That guy.
Sorry.
Is there a second?
Yes, I got it.
And for those people who are watching this who are totally baffled, the provision in the charter has for lower positions, not the department heads, but for lower positions, it allows 14 days so that the board could, by a four-fifths vote, reject the appointment and recall that position to be vacant. What we're doing right now is waiving that 14 days so that the person can actually, you know, start right away if we vote positively on this. So the public has a clue here. Okay, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, under the heading of Things I'm Glad I Crossed Off My List, I thank Mr. Fikarski for bringing up the Loether-Bab issue. I guess last meeting, we had gotten a letter in from a resident. I'm happy to report that road was milled today and will be paved tomorrow. So I'm going to be crossing that one off my list and...
Thank you for that.
That's a good one, good one done. Thank you. It was more of a happenstance, but we got it done. I did attend the ribbon cutting at the Route 124 parking ride with Mr. Kelleher for the solar panels that have been there for probably two years now. But the State Department of Transportation, the Transportation Secretary came down, there were a lot of, the highway administrator was there, Representative Luddy was there. Took the opportunity to at least talk to them about the town's affordable housing project going in across the street from there and how it's a great partnership to have that type of a development near some public transportation for that. And I also mentioned that there's a potential for something to be going on at the Marsaline property just on the other side of the bridge and perhaps may result in some discussions the town may need to have with Mastod on interchange and updates to that area if there's that much activity that's going to be going on there. So I think we at least got that out in front of them, so I did take the opportunity to do that. I did attend a meeting of the Capital Outlay Committee last week after the board had them in. That was a good conversation to start with them as we start to prepare our capital plan for the upcoming year. I'm excited about working with that particular committee. There's a tremendous amount of expertise on it, particularly in the area of finance and other areas. So that was, we talked a lot about the option from when they were before the board and how things are anticipated to work in our next process. As far as the town administrator recruitment, all the department heads, I'd say probably 95% of the department heads interviewed with Rick White last Tuesday. If you remember, that was one of his process milestones that he spoke to the board about when he was here last. So that happened this past week, so that's progressing as well. And then lastly, to answer Mr. Kelleher's question, I went back into the RBO stuff. So DBE is disadvantaged, that's a disadvantaged business enterprise company. And so, which essentially means you have a business that's more than 50% owned by either a socially or economically disadvantaged individual or individual. So why they call it out on that, I'm not sure, but that's what that means. Northeast Construction must be a disadvantaged business enterprise.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Select board member reports.
Along the lines of our finance director, I think we probably want to begin the discussion related to the town administrator's salary and any specific job requirement skills that we'd look for that individual to possess. I'm sure Mr. White is anxiously waiting for that information. And similarly, I think we should at least have the conversation on the construct of the screening committee. So make a final decision on how many members and how we proceed with that. And again, sooner probably than later. And that's it.
Just jump in on one thing. I think that's something that Mr. White owes us because he brought that up. He said to us that he has an idea of how that committee, that he would like to see He said to us that he has an idea of how that committee, that he would like to see that committee function. That's, that's an apart thing from how it's constituted as we appoint it. But I think we need to hear from him. We either do or don't agree ultimately, but he hasn't provided us with what it is he thinks they're going to be doing even.
And I'm fine with, with if we want additional information from him, but in the end, the committee's ours, and.
Yeah.
You know, I think we just decide collectively how we want it to, to, to look and operate. So, but if, if we want to reach out to Mr. White for some additional info, I'm fine with that. I just think we need to, to just figure out what the construct looks like, and that, that's going to help, I think, at least me, finalize the individual or individuals' names that I put forward, so. Enough said.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I did attend the Board of Health meeting last week, just, and the Council on Aging meeting, just to introduce myself as the liaison to these two committees. I was very well received on, on both of them, and I just wanted to let them know that if I was there, I would be there. If they needed anything, they could reach out to me as their liaison, and I just wanted the board to know.
Mark?
Rick White has contacted the two people. I've given him names and phone numbers off in terms of community leaders. And I want to thank Richard for the suggestion to reach out to the state. I think Tony and I spoke to the District Five headperson and the District Five coordinator. Both of them said that they'd, if there is development out in that 124 area, that they'd be glad and work with the, with the town. So at least we have names and phone numbers of who to speak to. So, thank you, Richard.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few things. Pete stole my thunder on a couple of them. The Penrose Letter of Support, I know this board wanted to have all department heads weigh in. How, how are we doing there?
We're fine. We'll get on the next agenda.
Excellent. I had asked a while.
Tony.
Oh, sorry, Tony.
They have a deadline of tomorrow, so I've been getting them in over the last couple of weeks, so we'll, I'll have all those.
That's an internal deadline.
Yes, no, I, I get that. I get, no, no, I understood it that way.
Beat the board's deadline, and perhaps, Mr. Chair, we can talk about how you want me to call, call those together for the board.
Sure.
To, to review at our, our next meeting.
I know it's an executive session discussion, but I'd like to, at some point, get some information on the 62 Route 28 church, to see how our, our last action in executive session, how that stands at this point. Mr. Doan has emailed me today and has reluctantly.
Which Mr. Doan?
Paul Doan.
Okay.
Sorry about that, yes. There's so many of them around.
Well, at least Paul and Bob.
Yeah. They, they, Mr., Paul Doan has rescinded his interest in being part of CPC from the historic. So we're back to square one on that. The Harwich Affordable Housing Trust sent a letter through me to the board, and I would like to see if that could also make our next agenda, to see how the board feels upon acting. You, you got the memo. I don't need to go down that line. I was at a meeting last night in Harwich with some residents. Do we have any idea when the, and I know it's a tough question, but any idea, Tony, when the RFP for the wall, the road stairs may get sent out? Is, are we, one of the residents thought it was the end of this month, and, and I don't think we ever said that in the meeting.
I don't think so. I think the last update, we received a statement of work from Conservation.
Correct.
On that. I'll have to check with Megan to see what that, what the timeline looks like.
Excellent.[1739.54]